The City of Palm Coast, City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, September the 13th, 2022. It is 9:00 a.m. and we are in the community wing of City Hall. So if you would all please rise and join me for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brancino.
Right here.
Councilmember Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Finelli.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
All members are present.
Okay. As we get started, I offer my humble apologies. This morning, I have a mouthful of stitches from some oral surgery yesterday. So I'm going to ask council to read my administrative parts of the agenda. So please bear with us and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Public participation shall be held in accordance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes and pursuant to the city council's meeting policies and procedures. Each speaker shall at the podium provide their name and may speak up to three minutes. The public may provide comments to the city council relative to matters not on the agenda at the times indicated on this agenda. Following any comments from the public, there may be discussion by the city council. When addressing the city council on specific enumerated agenda items, speakers shall direct all comments to the mayor, make their comments concise and to the point, not speak more than once on the same subject, not by speech or otherwise delay or interrupt proceedings or the peace of the city council, obey the orders of the mayor or city council, and not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments while addressing the city council, which pursuant to the council rules shall be considered disorderly. Any person who becomes disorderly or who fails to confine his or her comments to the identified subject or business shall be cautioned by the mayor and thereafter must conclude his or her remarks on the subject within the remaining designated time limit. Any speaker who fails to comply shall be barred from making any additional comments during the meeting and may be removed as necessary for the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you, councilor. With that, I would open up the agenda for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment this time? Please come up to the podium and give us your name for the record.
My name is Judy Cruvand, and I live at 12 Chipaway Court. And I'm here to tell you something very wonderful that the city did for me last week. It was over Labor Day weekend, and every one of my toilets and showers backed up. It was horrible. I mean, water was everywhere. And I called the plumber, and they finally came on Tuesday, and they couldn't figure it out. They couldn't find the sewer hookup, and they snaked it, nothing. And I didn't know what to do. And after I cried, I called the city. And they were there within two hours. And first, they couldn't find my sewer hookup, but they did not give up. They dug, they hit, until they found it, cleaned it out, and realized it was a pipe broken. The next day, I can't tell you how many trucks ended up at my house, and within two hours, they replaced the pipe, cleaned out everything, left it looking wonderful. And I just felt I had to come and tell everybody. It was just so wonderful.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank John Finelli for meeting with the group on safety on Cimarron yesterday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As far as the topic, yes, it is pedestrian safety on Cimarron. What else? Ninety percent of the residents on Cimarron Drive have signed a petition for a sidewalk or walking path. Over several months, we have been working with the city, and we thank you for all the help that you have provided. During the first week of September, 2022, the following information came out when just reading out of Washington. The Transportation Secretary announced availability of $5 billion in federal aid to cities and localities. The aim to be provide that the community pledge to promote safety for the multiple users of the roadway, particularly pedestrians and bicyclists. $5 billion nationwide. Question, can the City of Palm Coast assign a person to look into this federal aid and apply accordingly? I and others, thank you for looking into these federal funds that will be available. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Honorable David Alvin. Good morning, Vice Mayor. Honorable Eddie Brancino. Honorable Nick Clufus. Honorable Ed Danko. Honorable John Finelli. It is a with great joy.
I'm sorry, just please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Ed Fuller. I apologize. I live at 5 Cherokee Court West, and I'm a happy, proud citizen of the City of Palm Coast. There goes my time. My purpose here is today is to recognize a gentleman who has purposeful work, and he works for the city, the Public Works Department, and he operates a lawnmower. But he does it with such care and grace and dignity and trust. It just simply amazes me. I've seen this man, gentleman, numerous times, traffic going up and down this Palm Coast Parkway. And he wears that signature sun visor flap. And I never met the gentleman before, but every time I see him, when he's mowing the grass, you know, there's, you're going at a, the lawnmower emits projectiles. And when he sees a car, he will turn that lawnmower around so it doesn't hit the car. Or he will stop that lawnmower and make sure that nothing is emanating and hits a vehicle. Now, he works in the sun all day, 80 degrees, 90 degrees, 107 degrees feel like temperature. And it's just amazing to me how he does it. And I happened to happenstance, by local, be local, I met him at a discount tire store. I had a flat tire. And I thought it was him. I wasn't sure, but when I saw that flap, I had to be him. And I just wanted to acknowledge him. I said, Sammy, Sammy, I just want you to know that I appreciate all you do for keeping our city clean and proud to be here. That smile he had just lit up that entire showroom. So I wanted to acknowledge my gratitude for him. He's an economic driver because we have a clean city. He is a marketing director because we have a great city. And he's a public safety because we keep our, we keep our streets clean. And he's, he's an amazing guy. I've got more to say, but I just wanted to give him a shout out. And I apologize for calling Sammy G. I don't have his pronunciation down correctly. There was another event held, and it was the Find event. And I just want to give a shout out. There was over a ton of trash that was picked up. And there were two employees, or three employees, Jordan Myers, the Environmental Planning Department, Jim Tyner, I believe it is, oh my goodness, and Joe Papa. And they were, they were cooking. And what an amazing job they did. Maybe I'll have to do this in the second chapter. But I just want to acknowledge what a great job and what wonderful employees we have. And please thank him for me.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
First off, I spoke to St. Augustine yesterday. They're going to send some technical information. They have been using safety devices now for three years, and they're very happy with the results. Also, Warman Beach is a new project for them, but they're hoping by the end of the year to be able to send the results with them. And I want to bring up, and this was really a bad experience. I wasn't at the meeting Thursday. I vote with the Palm Coast League, but I watched the YouTube filming. I don't understand from 19 to 23, there's a question of $150 million. Where did it go? I could tell you, when I worked on Wall Street for 21 years, we moved millions of dollars a day, millions. Never had a trade problem, managed the money, was never a problem, not, never got questioned with the Securities Exchange Commission. So a lot of people are confused in this city. Where is our money going? And what is it being used for? The last thing, and this is not going to be a nice compliment, Mr. Danko, you know.
Please address your comments to me.
Mr. Danko owns a public apology to Ed. His remarks were atrocious on Tuesday. You could laugh about it. You do that to other people, you're going to run into a.
Please, sir, please, sir, direct your comments to me.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. If there are no other, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Gary Kunis, C-section. Two meetings ago, Mr. Clufus said there were seven boats involved. I have pictures of 35 that need deep water, four of which are in my canal that have no water at all. The, the situation, we pay in C-section the highest taxes. What happens to all the tax money for the seawall and docks? Doesn't go into the canals. Where are you wasting that money? It's gone. You know, you've been talking millions of dollars here. You don't review the departments. They ask for eight million, you give them eight million. We used to have departments ask us for money. Okay, you need eight, why? And you look into it. Well, we give you six. Made a statement that we all have to eat hot dogs and hamburgers instead of steak anymore to pay your taxes, but you're still eating the steak. You have to remember, it's, if you, if you need more money and you need money to run the golf course instead of hiding it in a maintenance trucks, charge more for the, for the fees for the people to play golf. The rest of us are carrying that. We shouldn't be. Okay? Remember what Admiral Yanamato said of the Imperial Japanese Navy? You've wakened the giant. We're the giant. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any, yeah, give it to the clerk, please. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing no one step forward, I'll close the public comment section of the agenda, and I'll go right to city manager. There were three different items. I don't know if you want to cover it. One, the availability of the budget online. Two, the federal process for the monies, if you have a comment there.
Yes. The budget information is online, and we invite any of the public that has questions of any of those items or thoughts of concerns, that they absolutely bring it to our attention so we can work through that. It's a complicated process, so it is difficult sometimes to look at the worksheets and understand what the interpretation of those dollars truly mean. And for the respective grants, through the budget process, we highlighted numerous capital improvement projects that do thrive on grants. And so we do prioritize our capital projects, looking at grants, specifically federal grants. We do have what we call grant champions throughout the organization, and we do look at any opportunities, especially now, as a Build Back Better program comes out of DC.
Thank you.
Just to add something. I just want to thank Ed and Judy for bringing up the good stories. This is the type of things that actually keeps us going over here. Not everything is as bad as, as we always make it to be. Thank you, Ed, for bringing that up. I'm pretty sure that the directors of those departments, I'm going to try to find out who those guys are and, you know, actually, you know, tell them to their faces, thank you. And this is the type of people that we have working for us in the city. I, I'm yet to meet, I'm yet to meet anybody that works for us, since Public Works to Administration, that was either rude or didn't do their jobs. I am very proud, very proud, from the guy in the bottom totem pole all the way up to the city manager, I'm proud of them. And this is a good opportunity to say it because you brought it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
If I could just add one thing, my comments regarding the Saltwater Canal were explicitly directed to try to show that there weren't any extraneous budget items that I could think of off the top of my head that were, quote, you know, nice to haves in our strategic action planning, and the fact that the audience that evening would not have been very sympathetic to that, that type of initiative. So I just wanted to clear that up for Mr. Kunis.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Finelli?
If I could. Thank you to the Utilities Department for taking care of Judy's problem at her house. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us. It's great to hear those good stories of, of the, the care that our, our city provides to the residents. Sammy G, great job. I don't know you personally, but you're, you're doing great things to keep our city clean and beautiful, and it's being recognized by our citizens. So thank you for that. That is much appreciated. Jim and Al, thank you for hosting me so graciously at your house last night. It was a wonderful meeting. I hope we will be able to find ways to move forward with making Cimarron safer. So thank you for that as well. And then Harry, the canals are still in the budget. It's still moving forward, and, and I, I want to let you know that I support us moving forward and making sure that our canals are, are clean and environmentally safe and friendly.
Councilman Danko.
I just want to say thank you for sharing that story, Judy. I really appreciate you coming here with that. And Gary, you know, I've been on board with dredging these canals from day one, and I will continue to fight that battle if necessary.
Thank you, councilman. The only thing I can add is, I think, Vice Mayor, you said from the, from the top to the bottom, every single one. I think let's place ourselves at the bottom, looking up at all the good work that's being done by those that actually run the show. So thank you for that. All right, with that, I would invite Mr. DiLorenzo to start with his presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. This is your.
And I'll, let me, let me just correct myself. Chief of Staff, DiLorenzo.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Jason DiLorenzo, Chief of Staff. Today, we are looking for a little guidance. This presentation is related to your Strategic Action Plan D4, which is part of the Economic Development Action. And as part of the staff process, you already approved our regional priorities that we have communicated to the county for inclusion in the Northeast Florida Regional Council priorities. This set of priorities, and like I said, we're, we're looking for some help here, is our local legislative priorities that will be included in a countywide effort. The county is coordinating this for ourself and all the municipalities to have a, a single handout for our legislative delegation and to be presented at the Legislative Delegation meeting later this year. So I'm going to go through a set of priorities here. What I'm looking, some are going to look very familiar to you. But what I'm looking for is that, is this a local priority that we should work on, or if you'd like to discuss it further, or if you would like to remove it from the priority list? Okay? So I'm going to go through, please ask me all the questions you need, and we will, we will take notes on this.
Mr. DiLorenzo, the session begins when?
I'm not sure, sir, in the date of legislative session.
March?
Yes, March. It's back in its normal position because not a, yeah, it's not a campaign year. Right. So as I said, as part of Council Priority D4, legislative priorities will be presented during the annual Legislative Delegation Meeting and included in the countywide brochure. And we've broken these up into two main categories with some subcategories. Main categories being safety and smart growth and community resiliency initiatives, with subcategories of risk of flood, environmentally sensitive areas, water supply, and water quality. The first project is very familiar to you. This is our transportation to access to the west. And as part of inclusion, we will ask for legislative support for this priority. If there's no questions, I'll move on.
I want to add, I think this is one of the most important things in order to keep the balance of this city. Right now, this city, it's so unbalanced between east and west, that's unreal. So anytime we could do anything to provide that, the other side's going to be, you know, built on and create ways, means, so people could move on the other side, developers, builders to go on the other side so we could balance the city. Because right now, this side is overburdened by now. So this is a very good part of this legislative priorities.
Yes, sir. We've started communicating this with our Legislative Delegation already. They're very familiar with it. But we want to make sure it's included as a top priority for the city. Next is another one that's familiar to you and also part of our, our regional ask, which is.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second. Instead of getting to the end, I just want to go on the record that city staff will work with county staff to collaborate, that this become a unified effort on the priority that you just mentioned, so the communication is clear amongst all parties.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This is the funding of Phase 2 and Phase 3 of Old Kings Road. That is north of Palm Coast Parkway. You'll remember, Phase 1 construction was completed earlier this year. And, but Phase 2 and Phase 3, although being the number, the number three priority in the TPO has not moved forward for several years, and we will continue to ask for legislative support to get this included in the DOT's five-year work plan.
And is the, the, the personality of this project is because it's one of our only, one of our very few north-south evacuation routes? So is that, that's the tie to resiliency?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is the, this is one project that if you live, if you've been living in Palm Coast for at least five years, you know the difference.
Yeah, this project is, was initially requested about 15 years ago, and although Phase 1 was funded and constructed, the city had to move projects around to be able to actually cobble together the dollars from DOT to get that construction done. And the phases in 2 and 3 haven't moved forward in several years now. Another one recently discussed is the replacing of Fire Station 22. Last week or so, you authorized the purchase of the new piece of property to locate the station. And we will, through this priority, we will ask for funding for construction of the new station. And that could be in, in, in direct funding or in support of grant funding, whatever we're able to define to assist us with the construction dollars of this project.
And just a footnote, there'll be a discussion about preserving the historic, the oldest municipal structure in Palm Coast as well. Not a part of the ask, but there's a consideration there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This one's a little bit more complicated. This is support funding opportunities for Blair Drive and Colbert Drive, flood mitigation, and flood map study and revision. So this is a LiDAR image. The darker the color, the lower the area. So you can see the light green colors near I-95 and Palm Coast Parkway where there's a higher elevation. And you can see this area through the head, the headwaters of the Graham Swamp where there is lower elevation. So there's a stormwater, we have a stormwater project in design to, that consists of increasing conveyance capacity of three culvert crossings, one at Blair Drive, one at, and another one at Colbert Drive, I'm sorry, and two on Colbert. The improvement of the drainage system will allow for faster recovery during storm events while providing additional flood production and resiliency to the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Since the stormwater modeling is being performed with more sophisticated software and data of that used during the effective model, the project provides an opportunity to revise the existing flood map so more accuracy defined limits of the floodplain once construction has taken place. So this is two things. This is a construction of three culverts to improve flow and revision of the flood map after a study is completed to improve the, our understanding of the area.
And this is somewhat important to me because, A, it's my district, but B, when flooding occurs or when we have really strong storms, in the past, it's been conveyed to me that Colbert Lane, north and south, have lower floodplains so that evacuating from Grand Haven would be difficult because you couldn't go north or south. So that's why we're one of the earlier evacuation zones, but this would certainly aid in any of those type of efforts. So thank you for this.
And just another question, which you may have to get back to us on. If memory serves me correctly, there's an insurance line that travels down Colbert Lane where insurance rates change. And my question's going to be, will this work change that in a future map? I guess, again, a question for a future follow-up.
We'll get you an answer to that. I don't know.
And then the other part of the question is, why was this geography chosen as opposed to, I mean, we have others as well. Just could you help us? Why did you pick here?
This was a project that Stormwater Engineering was already working on. This project is already in design, so we'll be looking for funding of construction dollars. So it's kind of a ready project.
So, but we certainly have many others that would, would, would qualify. This one's just further along the queue.
Yes. And you'll remember that Stormwater does modeling every other year and construction every other year. So this was likely identified through the modeling process.
Thank you.
This project you, I believe you are familiar with as well. This is capacity improvements of the London Waterway. This is in the Tansas Woods section of the city. And this project is ready to bid. You already approved it. And we will, we will be looking for construction funding for this capacity improvement in the northwest part of the, of the built-out part of the city. This is, this may be new to you. I don't remember this coming up in discussions at City Council before. If you travel on Palm Coast Parkway, eastbound from Florida Park, you find something quite unique, a hardwood hammock. And it's a beautiful hammock. The northern side of Palm Coast Parkway through that area has mostly already been protected. It was acquired through Land Trust from the state, and we don't have to worry about development on that side. On the south side of Palm Coast Parkway is still in private ownership and has the potential to be developed. This ask would be to have the piece of property included in the county's environmentally sensitive lands priority list, which would then make it eligible for Forever Florida funding if that became available.
So this priority ties directly to the governor's indication that he is sensitive to these environmental lands and interested in purchasing them to preserve them, you know, for all time?
Yes, sir. And also, this is just north of where we were looking at the Blair-Culbert area, and it's all part of the same connected system into Graham Swamp.
And obviously reinforces our Tree City branding as well.
Yes.
When I was going through the agenda and I saw this on there, it hadn't been something that I had seen before. Thank you for adding it. It's something that I've watched develop over the past 35-plus years here in Palm Coast, and it's absolutely beautiful. And I think we need to do what we can to preserve that.
And just as a, as an aside to reinforce what you are talking about, councilman, I lived on Kebus Cane, South Florida during Hurricane Andrew. Kebus Cane was blessed with one of the most beautiful tree canopies probably any. Key Biscayne was blessed with one of the most beautiful tree canopies probably anywhere in the country. The day after Hurricane Andrew hit, it was completely gone, and the area never looked the same again. So I can tell you firsthand that the beauty and the resiliency of the tree canopy is, not only is it beautiful, it's very important to the community and to the identity of Palm Coast as well.
You said that the south side of it, it's privately owned and could be developed?
Yes, from just east of Florida Park all the way to Colbert, where the Daytona State College campus is, that whole area, which is a pretty large piece, it's several parcels with one owner, are all in private ownership.
Hate to be negative, will be developed.
Well, with this priority, we're going to try to find the funding to protect it.
Unless we buy it. Well, okay. That's all I have to say.
The next one is very interesting, and I may need to describe it in detail. What you're looking at, again, this is LiDAR, and the lighter the color, the higher the elevation. This is, to orient yourself, Old Kings Road is the bisecting road there to the east of 95, and the yellow polygon there towards the south is the landfill. Okay, so you're familiar with where we are. That yellow stretch that runs through, the yellow-green stretch that runs through there is a relic sand dune. It actually has an elevation of 42 feet, and it is bordered by, to the east, by Bulow Creek. So I'm going to give you a little bit more information, because you may have not, may have not seen this one before. The relic dune, the relic dune or sand ridge, as termed by city staff, is a very unique topographical area for Palm Coast. At its highest point, the ridge reaches an elevation of 42 feet above sea level, which is very rare for the area. This ridge buffers Bulow Creek, an outstanding Florida waterway from Old Kings Road south, to provide the creek with added protection from pollution. Bulow Creek is very important to the floodplain management. The creek itself is a regulatory floodway with high-velocity floodwaters flow south until they reach the intercoastal waterway. At the terminus of the ridge, there is a Native American burial mound. Unfortunately, the burial mound was looted several years ago. This is included as, the burial mound and some other artifacts there are included in some historical-sensitive pieces that we have. And the dune itself is very interesting. I have walked it. It's very surprising. It's white sand and has cactus on it. You do not, you would not expect this type of, this type of environment in the middle of Flagler County. So it's very interesting. Again, we would look for inclusion in the county's ESL list and then potential funding to protect the dune and in turn protecting the Bulow Creek as its border.
What's the length of this dune?
It's, yeah, it's hard to tell from this. It's really long. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know if I could get that for you, but it's, it's quite long.
Is there, where is the closest city boundary?
It's within the city.
All of it, the entire stretch?
Yes.
So where is, where's the closest boundary?
The boundary, the city boundary is directly to the east of the, of the dune. The easternmost boundary is east of the dune.
Okay, got it.
Any questions? Okay, this is, has to do with water supply. This is constructed, a regional rapid infiltration basin site, a rib site. What you're looking at, the photo on the left is a large regional rib site in Orlando, and on the right is the single rib site that we have as a close-up, so you can kind of see the detail of how it works. Ours is on Old Kings Road between State Road 100 and Palm Coast Parkway on the east A study has been completed for a resiliency plan for rapid infiltration basin site. The study revealed that converting the spray irrigation to rapid infiltration basins is feasible and will increase the much-needed effluent capacity along with storage. The rib treats the wastewater as it infiltrates through the soil and at the same time replenishes the aquifer. The process can treat much larger volume of wastewater on a small land area than above-ground high-volume irrigation. So in addition to this rib site, we have a high-volume spray site, which is on the east side of US-1. What this priority, it would look for state funding to build a regional rib site that can handle our, you know, our future growth when it comes to wastewater effluent.
And the concept of, I guess, percolation is in here, so it functions in some way similarly to our swale system? Or am I taking liberty there?
Well, I definitely would turn it over to Steve Flanagan, our utility director, for additional detail, but the purpose is to recapture that water as much as we can and return that to the aquifer.
That's enough.
And the final priority has to do with water quality. This is PEP asset management inventory and analysis. There are, at buildout, there's going to be about 20,000 PEP tanks. We are at, we are at 16,000 right now. And there's a need to be able to understand and manage these sites, and there is several software programs that can help us with this asset management. One has not been identified. We don't have a cost for it yet, but it will be fairly expensive, and we will look for support for community resiliency to fund the purchase of the asset management software. Good. And the final one has to do with the saltwater canal health and stewardship. And as you know, you approved as a local priority, the dredging of the canals to remove unsuitable materials to restore depth. And as part of the first phase, preliminary bathymetric survey along with grab samples are being conducted to evaluate the conditions. And in the event recognized environmental conditions exist, city staff will be targeting environmental grants to assist with recovery, and this priority is for support for those grants or other funding. And that concludes my presentation.
Let me just make an introductory comment. So during this window of the next two years, we will have a louder voice than we have enjoyed in many years. So I would invite each city council member to bring forward any additional priorities that could be considered by the legislature, because this is money that we have an opportunity to see that's not coming out of taxpayers' pockets. And I just have to underscore the urgency that we only get, you know, two shots at this, let's say. Not that we won't always continue to have legislative asks, but there is a star alignment now that we should take advantage of. I know we're working closely with the county, so we have a louder voice for all these things. But if there are any items that have not made it to this preliminary list, I would encourage you to, you know, contact city manager sooner than later and talk it through. I would also, I know that Mr. DiLorenzo is looking for some guidance here. I personally think all of those items would qualify, however, I would very much like to see us add some additional ones as well. I am sensitive to the fact that you can't just ask. There's a great deal of backup and support materials that are necessary in order to make an ask, but I implore you with a great sense of urgency that we make our list as long as we can of truly important, you know, items and take advantage of it.
How many of these items can actually be, you know, looked at by the legislative?
We're going to present all of them.
Yeah, but usually, we were, we had three of them.
As part of the regional council's priority list, we were allowed to submit three. This year, we submitted two. But this is our own county document that we're working on. The county is coordinating this with all the municipalities to present as one legislative ask for the county. So the number is not limited.
Because looking at over here, excuse me, which one would you throw out of this if you had to? Reduce the risk of flood, protect the environmental-sensitive areas, protect water supply, protect water quality. You really can't let go of any of this, to be honest with you. So this is good that we have the county involved, and we could present as many as we can, as many as we can, because before, we were up to three.
So, and this is just a question that I have. These local legislative priorities, would this also include policy? Or is this just local two projects in our area? Because I know homeowner insurance reform is something that I think we need to support.
Yeah, these priorities are all projects or acquisitions.
This is kind of separate from that.
But no, I think you bring up a valid point that, you know, we could include policy. Now, the Florida League of Cities will have a strong bit on policy as well. That might cover some of the items that you're talking, you know, that you're considering, but maybe not on the insurance side. So if you had something on the policy side that was important, we could, you know, include that with consensus.
Okay, maybe we could discuss that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So I think the concept of legislative policy priorities follows up with suggestions that Councilman Danko discussed, and I discussed it a lot. I think it's a really good area. And I would just yield to, that probably should be better discussed separately, those policies from the projects, because they're different buckets from Tallahassee asks and different committees that this would flow through, but not any less important. But today, we're kind of focused just on the project piece. Would you give us the timeline? Because how much, you know, I've made a big ask here of my fellow council members. How much time do we have to allow your proper preparation?
The county has requested we transmit these by September 30.
So we have no time.
We have a couple of weeks. We have a couple of weeks.
Gentlemen, if, if there's something hot and bothersome to you, let's, let's get it out there really quick. I mean, I would hate to look back and say, geez, you know, woulda, coulda, shoulda. But it's a very short timeline, okay? Does that give you sufficient direction?
Yes, sir. I was just going to give you the next steps, which will be, we'll, we'll transmit these to the county. I'll ask if we can have a little bit more time, and so I'll see if we can do that. I don't know what their printing schedule is. And then we will also, these ones that have consensus right now, we will communicate and work with our lobbyist as well to ensure that they understand what our priorities are, and they're working for us on these in Tallahassee.
So if your lunch were dependent on your best guess as to what the total number of dollars you've just described to us would be, what would that number be? Just to give us a magnitude.
I didn't put that pencil to paper.
Seven digits, eight digits. I mean, just give us...
The first, the first two alone are in the high 20 million range each. Well, the first one is about 7 million, and the second one is, I think, 15, 16.
So we're easily within, I'll give you a broad window, a 25 to $50 million ask, all things considered. I just want to highlight that because this would be money coming, pouring out of Tallahassee in our direction. So it's a big deal.
Yeah, that might, that might be low. I don't know what the regional rib site might cost. Still, you have to identify property and everything else, but yeah. But yes, it's significant, significant dollars that we're pursuing.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, thank you. Move to item number two under Presentations or Resolution. Counselor, if you would help me with that.
Item number two is a resolution concerning Community Development Block Grant CARES Act Public Service Grant Subrecipient Agreement. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the subrecipient agreements for the eligible CDBG-CV public service grant activities, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute set agreements with the approved organizations, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. And Jose Papa is here with Community Development to make this presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and members of City Council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. I'd just like to give you a brief background on what, what this program is and where the funding's from, but at the same time also acknowledge that the recipients of the funding are here, and that would be Ms. Carrie Baird from Flagler CARES and Ms. Trish Giacomo from the Family Life Center. So essentially, the funding for this program comes from, through the CARES Act, which was passed in 2020. And again, that act was designed to help communities recover, to prevent, prepare for, or respond to the impacts of the coronavirus. And the funding came to us through the CDBG program, so we must follow the rules essentially established within any, with our, within our entitlement program through CDBG. So with Phase One, we received about $300,000. If you remember, that, that fund was used to help pay for utilities for those who are impacted by COVID. And then there was a second round of funding that went mainly to states and directly to nonprofits. This third round, of which there was about $340,000, came to the city. And so that $340,000, in addition to the five, a leftover of about $5,000 from round one, brings a total of $345,000, five and change, that is available to fund this next phase of the recovery from, from COVID. So it was that the Citizens Advisory Task Force, who is, who is our advisory board for the CDBG program, held a public hearing on May to hear public testimony as to how the funds should be used. And they recommended the allocation of these funds through a grant program to fund public service programs. City Council, in turn, you held a public hearing also and agreed with the Citizens Advisory Task Force recommendation. And so we moved on with a grant program using, that will use the CDBG CV funds. So what we did, and there was a lot of steps in between that approval of that action and where we were able to issue a, what we call a notice of funding availability, which is an announcement that we have the funds available for, for public service activities. And we had to establish the criteria, the rules, and, and also the necessary paperwork that we would have that ahead of time. And I would say that our recipients have been very patient with helping us work through this process, since it is something that's not done in our ordinary, everyday work. So that notice of funding availability, essentially the grant announcement, we issued twice, March 2nd and June 1st. And as a result of that, we received applications from Flagler CARES and Family Life Center and before a deadline of June 15, 2022. So the proposed activities from Flagler CARES would be the emergency rent and utility payment assistance, behavioral services assistance, and from Family Life Center, we will have emergency services to domestic violence victims and relocation assistance. The amount of funding for each activity would be about $75,000. That's, so that's a total of $300,000 for those four activities, with $45,000 going for monitoring and the administration of activities. We need, we have a grant consultant who will help us to make sure that those who are receiving assistance are actually qualified to receive that assistance. It's something that's really a necessary step, so that ultimately, the city is held responsible for the use of these dollars. That if it went to an ineligible activity, although there are the grant recipients, we would be responsible for paying. would be responsible for paying the federal government back those funds. And that's why we have this extra step of a consultant to monitor their activities. But I will say with confidence that the two recipients are not strangers to receiving federal or state grants. I believe they've also received other forms of CARES Act allocation, and so they're familiar with how that whole funding bill was to be enacted at the local level. And so with that, I will just recommend that the City Council approve those grant agreements so that we may move forward with, with the activities as stated. And they are here to answer the details if you have any questions about their programs. They're more knowledgeable about it than I am. I can only read what's on paper, but the details they will have.
I think Mr. Papa is looking kind of for a consensus amongst City Council today that the Citizens Advisory Task Force has chosen to spread the wealth amongst the four different items that you saw. So any questions or comments from any council members at this time?
I could say that I've known many families that have worked with both the Family Life Center and Flagler CARES to get the support they need to, to, to remain and live here in Flagler County. And they are both great organizations and they do wonderful things for our community.
Just the fact that these two organizations exist should be commendable. I, to be honest with you, Flagler CARES, I'm not 100% familiar with you, but gotta be good, gotta be good. Now, Trish, there's no two Trish's out there. So keep up the good work, lady. Thank you.
A question for staff and then I'd also like to send the praises of both of these establishments to the City of Palm Coast and Flagler County. Family Life Center with Trish, we've been involved with for a while now and it's always a mission of success. But were there any other organizations that applied for these funds?
No, sir, we did not get any.
So then I would also like to, you know, congratulate you on being active in our community and with our city and being on the look for these type of opportunities. And I'm very proud as a city that we can provide them to such great services that are being rendered to our residents. So thank you, guys.
Just last comment. I think Ms. Giacomo would extend an invitation, but there's some security pieces to that. But I know Ms. Baird may want to extend an invitation to each of our City Council members to come walk through your new digs, because it's quite impressive. And I understand it's going to be a facilitation layer to help direct funds from not just these sources, but from many others for the future. So a little hands-on when it's convenient. It's over in, in City Marketplace, so you can also get a good deli lunch over there if you take the time to walk through.
Bore his head.
And that too. All right, thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Papa.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
The next item is item number E3 on the agenda. This is a resolution for the countywide interlocal agreement for automatic mutual aid for fire and rescue services. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of the interlocal agreement related to an automatic mutual aid interlocal agreement for fire protection and rescue services by and between the City of Palm Coast, the City of Flagler Beach, and Flagler County, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. Today we'll have Battalion Chief Kyle Berryhill to present.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Kyle Berryhill, Palm Coast Fire Department. We're here today to talk about the interlocal agreement for automatic mutual aid between Palm Coast, Flagler County, and Flagler Beach. And I'd like to recognize Chief Tucker, who's here today and support. Chief Pace also wanted to be here today. Chief Tucker of Flagler County Fire Rescue is here today to support it. And Chief Pace of the Flagler Beach Fire Department wanted to be here today but was unable to attend. But before I get into that, I just want to thank everyone for attending our 9/11 ceremony on Sunday. It was a really special moment and we really appreciated you guys helping us to remember those, the heroes of 9/11. Many of us, the current generation of your first responders, were inspired by those acts and that's why we decided to sign up today, me included. So let's get into this. Let's talk about how the Palm Coast Fire Department and the three agencies respond together. So your Palm Coast Fire Department will respond to over 13,000 calls in fiscal year We'll respond to all types, structured fires, medical calls, which is our greatest type of call. Car crashes, things that we haven't figured out yet, but we'll know when we show up. And then even all the way down to an invalid assist where someone calls, they've just fallen down, because we're able to come and help and pick them up, they don't have, they don't need medical assistance yet. They're able to stay in their home. We do stuff like that every day. And whenever we respond to a medical call, Flagler County Fire Rescue responds with their transport unit. They live in three of our firehouses, they're a wonderful partner, and they're the transport agency for everything in Flagler County. So for at least the 60% of medical calls, but many of the other calls, they're responding today with us. Additionally, all three agencies respond together for automatic or mutual aid throughout the county. We'll talk a little bit more about what that means in a second. But it's very common for the Palm Coast firefighters to respond to the west side of the county or to the hammock if there's a large scale incident, or into Flagler Beach for something big and vice versa. If we have something on the southeastern part of the city, Flagler Beaches frequently respond. Flagler County units respond with us all the time in the city. So and protect a big part of a southern part of our city. So the way that works today is that we use automatic vehicle location technology or AVL technology and predetermined run cards. And so the first assigned unit is assigned based on its location and appropriateness. And then the other thing about what a run card means is we send something different to a fire alarm, we'll send one engine emergency and another engine non-emergency. Then what we'll send to a structured fire, well, we'll send three engines, an aerial, a command vehicle, and a transport rescue, all emergency. So that's what the run card, it's typing, right? Call typing. So that's how we're responding today. And a lot of this agreement is taking some of the things that we've done today, tweaking them just a little bit, but also putting a commitment on paper together. So let's define a couple of the terms that are associated with the agreement. Automatic aid is assistance that is automatically dispatched to predetermined areas or emergency call types. So in some places, you may have to request crossing a jurisdictional line, but that's not how it occurs in Flagler County. It's a special thing, we'll talk about that a little more in a second. Mutual aid is assistance that's dispatched upon request. The request might be a special, or a type or a number of personnel, a specific piece of equipment, or specialized expertise. An example of the mutual aid is when the rescue occurred off of the water tower, when the worker was up there and needed assistance, Palm Coast Fire Truck arrived first and said, the stuff on the fire truck is not enough, we need some more stuff to help this guy. And Flagler County's technical rescue team was specifically requested and our confined space team also responded. And together they initiated the rescue and that gentleman was brought down safely. So that was a mutual aid, it was a specific request. And then we use closest appropriate unit response, which is the process of assigning by resource location and appropriate, you know, unit type. The unit with the least travel time to the call regardless of jurisdiction where the call originates. And that's what we occur, we do here. We recognize that our residents don't create, use jurisdictional lines to determine where they have lunch or where they go to the gym or where their friends live. So we want to make sure that we don't use them to determine whether or not we'll respond to an emergency. It's a very unique thing and it's something special. It's something that our partners who have worked in other places say is something special about our community, but it is the character of our county from what I've seen. So some agreement details, there's, these are some of the different sections associated with the agreement. The dispatch and communications section says that we're going to agree to collaborate on things like the run cards. And then it talks a little bit about how we use the radio to work together. The automatic and mutual aid operations kind of lay out some of the procedures we have talked about with those two specific requests for assistance. And then they also get into some details, such as who will ultimately command a scene within jurisdictional lines. Those kind of things do matter. Training is us committing to training together, which we're doing today, but again, putting it on paper makes it, it'd be something that we would recognize in a grant proposal for say, is that we not only do train together, but we've committed to it in this agreement. Our attorneys have reviewed this and from a liability standpoint, essentially we're responsible for ourselves in these kind of situations. Reimbursement, when we have, like, we're currently in the process of seeking reimbursement from our Panhandle deployment, that was part of our statewide emergency response plan. But we wouldn't seek reimbursement from a local neighbor, but we would still be eligible to seek federal or state reimbursement in the event that something that we responded to as part of this agreement became a national or state level disaster. The term of this agreement is that anytime we could provide 90-day written notice that we didn't want to participate anymore, up until then, this agreement will be in place until we replace it. And then there's some miscellaneous provisions, such as a process for revision if we, if we're interested about, you know, something new that occurs in our system. So those are the agreement details. And so we were bringing a resolution at the next council meeting. You're the first board that's heard this proposal. I know that Chief Tucker is preparing to bring it to the Board of County Commissioners and Chief Pace is preparing to bring it to the Flagler County, or the Flagler Beach City Council. So are there any questions?
So this is a continuation of a collaborative effort to reduce response times and care for our citizens, right?
Yes, sir. The last time we took a look at this was 20 years ago, so we've been working together to update, you know, it's kind of like an update on our phone. This is the same but better. And I would say that collaboration with our partner agencies is at an all-time high. A lot of that has to do with the direction from you, the direction from Ms. Bevan, and the relationships that we're working really hard to build. We really value the relationship with Chief Tucker and Chief Pace and all the first responders of both Flagler County Fire Rescue and Flagler Beach Fire Department.
Very good.
This is a no-brainer, to be honest with you. Only a couple of questions as to how to, for example, Palm Coast communicate with Flagler Beach Fire to see which are the predetermined areas?
Yeah, so predetermined is by, more about location than it is about this area is predetermined. So what we've predetermined is that we're going to use the speed limits and the street's capacity for speed, our location that we're getting through the AVL technology, and then the location of the, of the emergency situation. So there's never a situation where we say, here's an emergency, we're gonna, this is the line and you're gonna go even though we're closer. But there would be situations where something that's non-emergent might be preferred to go, and those would be jurisdictionally based.
And the other, the only other question is that, I've seen it in the past, but I'm pretty sure you got that ironed out, was the theater jurisdiction. How do you guys go about it? Have you spoken about it or is it something that you're still working on?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Theater jurisdiction, like the jurisdiction, who gets on the scene, who takes control of the scene?
Yes, sir. So that's specifically laid out in this in that our first arrival officer establishes incident command, which is part of the incident command system, which is a framework of organization that will use as, an incident as small as a car crash, all the way up to something as large as a pandemic response or hurricane here in the city. And so, and then it'll go from a rank structure and then if our, so it's not uncommon for one of our commanders to respond to the hammock. Or the other night, the Flagler County Battalion Commander commanded a fire in Somono Woods. But then eventually we want to ensure that the command staff from the proper jurisdiction shows up, just so that way the, the correct administration are aware of how, how the incident went down.
Yeah, because you could go from a simple fire to a gas station fire for example.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's, I think that has to be nicely ironed out, but I trust you guys.
Yes, sir. This actually is something that we did clarify in this agreement that we haven't had as clear a path to until today, until now.
We in good hands.
As far as I'm concerned, I think the strongest wording, verbiage in all of this presentation was the unit with the least travel time to the call regardless of jurisdiction where the call originates is going to provide the appropriate response. And I think that if we polled our community, 100% of individuals, when they're in need of help, would want the closest unit to be responding to them. And I think this provides a framework to do that. And thank you for everything that you're doing for our community.
Response to time is second only to our stormwater folks that help our residents.
We're trying to get as fast as them, they're pretty quick.
Because those four minutes that we heard about earlier are really critical.
Yes, sir.
I would like to associate myself with all those comments and to also thank you guys for an amazing 9/11 ceremony. It was really moving. I had the opportunity to share it with, with two of my children and that led to conversations about why we were there and what was going on. So I really appreciate what you guys did, how you were able to pivot on a minute's notice to move the location of it as well. So thank you.
Yeah, Parks and Rec deserves a ton of credit for their staff for being able to pick up a whole event and move it. It wasn't far, but it was far enough for it to be a lot of work for them. We really appreciated it.
Ditto to all those comments. And as Councilman Burkino said, this is a no-brainer. Thank you.
KB, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is E4. A resolution concerning city health insurance. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving a contract with Florida Blue for health insurance and to include stop loss, life and disability insurance for city employees, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor. Councilmembers, Renina Fuller, Director of Human Resources for the city. I have Ashley Finner here today. She is our benefits coordinator. And as one of your priorities on succession planning, we're training up. So Ash is going to take it from here today.
Good morning. Today we have a presentation recommending approval of the continuation of health insurance with Florida Blue and companion life for stop loss insurance and the standard for our life and disability insurances. A little background, we have a team of city employees who review our benefits. The city currently offers a well-rounded self-insured benefits program to all full-time employees. Under the self-insured program, the city pays a per employee per month fee for any group health plan administration service, as well as for any health insurance claims incurred. This year, we are glad to be able to offer a 24/7 teledoc service. And Brown and Brown is our current benefits broker. All costs are paid from the health insurance fund. Our stop loss carrier is companion life. The stop loss premium did increase this year by approximately $114,000. And the Florida Blue administration, administrative fee increased from $53.20 to $56.78 per employee per month. The standard will continue to cover basic life and long-term disability insurance with no premium changes. Additionally, the city offers dental, vision, voluntary life insurance, voluntary short-term disability insurance, and supplemental accident and critical illness insurance. The full burden of those are carried by the employees. So today we are seeking approval for Florida Blue to remain as the plan administrator, companion as the stop loss insurance carrier, and the standard as the disability and life provider with a coverage effective date of October 1st, 2022. And we're here to answer any questions.
I would just ask city manager, do you have a regular, through HR, I guess, contact with employees on their level of satisfaction to the service provided? I assume you get an input.
Of course, yeah. And to be a companion to what was already said of a team of employees that look out for the best interest of our employees, that's navigated up and down the channels of our organization.
So I think staff is looking for consensus here on continuing with this plan, which I see a nod from, that give you the direction that you're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is E5, which is an ordinance amending the boundaries of the Seminole Palms Community Development District. This is an ordinance of the City of Palm Coast amending the boundaries of the Seminole Palms Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. And today we have Ms. Jordan Myers here for the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers. So this, as Nasa mentioned, this is amending the Seminole Palms Community Development District boundaries. A little background, this is the existing Seminole Palm CDD. It's 239.63 acres. And you can see it's just north of the Grand Landing subdivision off of Seminole Woods Boulevard. And the CDD was developed on, or approved on January 4th of 2022. This would be the new boundaries of the CDD. So this is the existing boundaries here. And this is the 70.18 acres that they are requesting to add to the existing CDD, making the total district 309.81 acres. These are the proposed facilities and services. So you can see over here is the most important part, whoever is responsible for these. So you can see over here is the most important part, whoever is responsible for these items. You can see water and wastewater, ownership and operation is the CDD and the city. Off-site would be the city, not onsite. Everything onsite would be private to the CDD. Again, here, off-site improvements would be ownership of the city. The city has run news ads two weeks prior to each public hearing. We, staff has not received any questions or comments from the public on this. And planning staff recommends that the city council determine the Seminole Palms Community Development District petition is in compliance with Florida statutes, Chapter 190, and the city's comprehensive plan, and approve the ordinance amending the boundaries of the Seminole Palms Community Development District, application number 5188. This item will come before you two more times for first reading, on the 20th, and second reading on the 4th of October. And the applicant is here, all the way from Tallahassee, to answer any questions that you may have.
So the question is, the, the applicant, the intention of the CDD is to be responsible for, I'll just use the term loosely, infrastructure?
Yes.
So we're expanding the geography of which they would be responsible for this infrastructure?
That's correct. It's a funding mechanism.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions from the applicant specific to this? It seems...
Like the mayor is saying, it just removes the burden, the expense of that infrastructure from the city in places that aren't the residence of that development.
Yes, sir.
Outside the bounds of what the CDD and HRA is responsible for, my question is only regarding this chart. I understand that the CDD is going to operate the majority of these improvements, but could you just give an example of an off-site improvement that the city may be responsible for? Would that be something like a change at our water facility, or something that we would need?
It would be any pipes for the citation extension that'll go through, so any water, wastewater in that extension.
Understood. So off-site infrastructure, I didn't fully understand, but goodbye, May. Thank you, Jordan.
Just for the people watching, CDD means Community Development Districts. That's what it is, because it's very important. People probably sometimes has no idea what we're talking about, so it's clear.
Yes, sir.
It's important to tell them. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is E6, which is an ordinance amending Section 2-36 Meetings of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Section 2-36 Subsection A Meetings of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast, providing for separability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. City Clerk Virginia Smith is here for the presentation.
So if you could just refresh our memory, your new responsibility or title with regard to the Clerks Association of the State of Florida is what?
Sure. I am the Central East Director for Florida Association of City Clerks, encompasses the largest city group from Flagler County down to Pervard County over to Polk County.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you. This morning's item is proposing an amendment to the ordinance relating to council meetings, more particularly the organizational meeting for after each election. In 2011, a charter amendment was approved by the voters to change our elections from odd years to even years, allowing the city races to be on the county ballots, which saved the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars over the past seven to eight year, you know, nine years, sorry. Florida statutes, Section 100.191, provides for federal write-in absentee ballots for the voters overseas. Federal write-in absentee ballots are provided an extra 10 days to be received by the supervisor of elections to be canvassed. After the ballots are canvassed, the supervisor can then certify the official election results. This year's timeline, November 8th, is the general election, with the final canvassing and certification to be completed on Friday, 6:00 PM. And our city council business meeting for the organizational meeting this year is scheduled to be November 15th, so that is three days shy of actual official certification. So the proposed amendment is for the timing of the organizational meeting to induct the new members of city council that are newly elected after receipt of official results. The general election is set by federal government as the Tuesday next after the first Monday in the month of November. The city and the supervisor are to follow Section 100.191 Florida statutes, so it is in the best interest to amend Section 2-36A of the Code of Ordinances for organizational meeting. This amendment ensures that all election results received are official. The options for city council for the organizational meeting with adoption of this proposed amendment would be for a December 6th, Tuesday night, meeting to induct the new members. You can call a special meeting to induct the new members. There's a couple of suggestions. November 22nd, the following Tuesday after certification, is also the week of Thanksgiving. And then November 29th is the Tuesday the week after Thanksgiving. But council can choose any date to their pleasing to induct the new, newly-elected officials. This will also assist us in, if this amendment is adopted for future elections regarding the federal write-in absentee ballots, and it allows for the city to then schedule in advance for each election season. And with that, is the...
So the, the language would prevent us from having to deal with this issue again?
Correct.
Which, which, we just got caught in the, in the calendar this time, so this improves that. So I would just ask the city council members, a preference here in terms of, my preference would always be sooner than later, but you have to be sensitive to the holiday.
The holiday is the issue. I may actually be out of town on that holiday, so unfortunately, I mean, I wish we could do it sooner.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay. So it looks to me like the first date that you offered us, I'm thinking everyone is kind of conceives is the... Is the optimum date?
The December 6th regular meeting date?
Right.
That would work. That's the way that we've revised it, to just say the next regular meeting. You always have the option of calling a special meeting. You can do that, but that's the way we wrote it now, just in the future to prevent this from happening again, and make sure we have the certified results before we do the induction.
It would be an agenda item in a, in a, a regularly-agenda meeting, but I mean, pop and circumstances aside, I think that we can, you know, recognize the, the newly-elected members well, and, and use that date if everybody's okay with that.
Sure, that would work. Perfect.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, so this proposed ordinance will come back for two reads next week, on September 20th, and then October 4th for final adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We open up the final public participation for today's meeting. Are there any members of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Gene Dowd. The presentations today covered almost everything I was going to talk about, but I'll do it anyway. First, thank you to all first responders, all military, current, and those that have served, men and women. Thanks to the city staff. It's funny, I was going to talk about Jackson, Mississippi, 150,000 people with no water. And today's presentation opened up with be ready for the future, and obviously, the past councils have done that. So thank you to all city staff, and especially the people that work in the water department. We don't talk about that enough. We don't see them unless they're out in the roads, but the ones that, men and women that work inside, thank you. And to you, Mayor, and the council, last week, a comment was made about the splashpads, and one of the councilmen spoke up about his kids. Well, it's not just kids, it's grandkids. My granddaughter went there last month. She also went there a year ago, even though the splashpad was not there. I hope the city council finds a way to make it work. I believe you men, and possibly future women, if it rolls into next year, will get that job done. I also want to thank councilman that mentioned homeowners insurance. I got this mailing, and I'm so livid. You need a new roof? They put a little sticker, "Call us." They have all the legal mumbo jumbo that they won't do, and the illegal will hide costs, but that, they put this there. Please call us if you need a new roof. Won't save you insurance, but we'll get you a roof. So thank you, councilman. I hope you make that part of your agenda. I'd like to thank Jose Papa. I read his report online after the fact, and I think that CBG were helping the people. I heard people talk about it last week. There's a lot of people hurt in this community. There's 300 and some thousand dollars that was put out to the needy, the, the women that are abused, or men, and thank you. Last but not least, I believe this chamber is paid for by all taxpayers, past and present. Over the holiday weekend, this chamber was used to do some kind of video. I believe the other three candidates that are in the election should be offered the same option if they want to, which I doubt, but if they want to, this council, city manager, should extend that offer to the other three candidates that would come in notified that they'd be in this chamber. Sneaking in here on a holiday weekend to film whatever reason is totally, totally an insult to every taxpayer that helped pay for this building and maintain it today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Yes, sir.
Ed Fuller, Palm Coast. I also want to echo, I want to thank all our veterans, first responders, firefighters, for your service and sacrifice for our community and for our country. I want to thank the mayor, all the city council members, city manager, and the assistant city manager for attending the memorial service put on by the fire department. It was a moving and somber event, one that we should never forget, and we should always honor the, the sacrifice of our firefighters. And I once, also wanted to thank the mayor for his sobering remarks at the, at the event, and for Vice Mayor Brancino placing the memorial wreath, the rabbi for her thoughtful prayer, Lieutenant Patrick Giuliano for orchestrating such a dignified and fitting event. That planning was unbelievable. And one thing about our fire department, you talk about flexible on their feet, I mean, you know, the heavens opened up just before that event. Everybody got into that fire station, it was like there was not a drop of water on that floor. That was amazing. So thank you. Chief Barry Hill, thank you so much. I want to congratulate Chief Forte for winning the Tunnel to Towers plaque. And lastly, the string quartet that was provided by Flagler Palm Coast High School, those musicians, we can't thank them enough. They are magical. What a dignified, somber tenor. They, they, I, I'll admit it, I cried. I cried during that, and I will always do that. It's wonderful to see kids, kids, listen to me, these young professional musicians, okay, give their all to an occasion like that. And I want to end this with this remark. Gratitude makes sense of our past and brings people peace for today and creates a vision for tomorrow. And I just want to thank everybody here for all the hard work you do, and all the city council members for sitting up here and listening to people like myself. I just hope you really understand, and I appreciate what you all do. City manager, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your steadfastness in bringing our city forward. Thank you, and may God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? Seeing none approach, I will close public comment at this time. I'll open up to the deus, any final comments from members of city council today?
I just basically have to congratulate Patrick Giuliano and the fire department for the job they did at the, I don't want to use the word celebrating, I want to use the word remembers, because I remember that a lot. I was part of the emergency personnel that responded the following day. For four days, I worked there, and only if you worked there, you could even dream of what that was. Most of the personnel that went there, they were trained to do that, but for the life of me, nobody was ever prepared to see that magnitude of destruction like I seen there, bodies being removed. And one thing I remember clearly was, everybody was doing everything, machines working, and suddenly, somebody said, "Stop, quiet." And everybody, that you could hear a pin drop, because they thought they hurt somebody. Okay? And therefore, this was amongst all that chaos that was chaotic. There was very organized and very responsible people. 9/11 did something, unfortunately, that we should do by ourselves a lot, was bringing the United States together. A lot of people got together via 9/11. So let's keep remembering 9/11 so people would stay together. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Comment?
Yep, I would just like to echo those comments as well. There was a tremendous remembrance ceremony, and I wanted to thank everyone who was in attendance, and also our Parks and Recreation Department for rapidly moving it across the street. That was tremendous. I know that took a lot of work. I saw the literal sweat that it took, and also the fire department for orchestrating this. Thank you.
Final comments?
I'll echo those same comments.
I just remind the audience and the public that the Tunnel, Tunnels to Tower Award just reinforces the fact that Tunnels to Towers will be an annual event here in Palm Coast forever to come, so we're, we're quite excited about that, and it's a great organization. I can attest to it personally. So congratulations again to Chief, very, very well-deserved. So with that, I would ask city attorney, do you have any final comments for today?
I do not.
Then I'll move to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say I appreciate all the thoughtful and kind remarks today from city council and members of the public of appreciation for our team. We lead by passion and our hearts, and we just, I want to say personally, thank you to, to everyone for this weekend's events. I know there was a lot of heavy lifting, and also a lot of passion behind that, so thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
And a second, all in favor, aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all.